Please join me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
To start this evening, we have a presentation dealing with the proposed Portwalk where the Parade Mall currently exists and the proposed underground municipal parking garage, which you may have heard a little bit about. And we have representation here this evening to speak about it. And if City Manager has any comments to make to introduce it or if we want to go right into the presentation.
Sure, Your Honor. Thank you very much. What I'd like to do is ask Dana Levinson, the Chairman of the Economic Development Commission, to come forward and start the presentation. As you may be aware, there is a letter under the Presentation section of the Agenda in which the Economic Development Commission has reviewed this issue and pretty much has initiated this, working with the representatives from Portwalk. And they thought it was very important that it come before the City Council for discussion and hopefully for some action. Also with Dana this evening from the Economic Development Commission is Everett Eaton, the Vice Chairman. So this time, I'd like to ask that Dana Levinson come forward, if that's okay, Your Honor.
Please do. Thanks, Dana.
Good evening, and thank you very much for making room for us this evening on your agenda. Honorable Mayor and members of the City Council, I am Dana Levinson, and I serve as the City's Economic Development Commission Chairperson. And as City Manager Bohenko has mentioned, I'm here with Everett Eaton, the Vice Chair. And we want to briefly outline for you tonight why the Economic Development Commission voted unanimously to endorse the proposed Portwalk project. I'm going to speak to you from a general policy perspective, and then I'll turn it over to Everett, who will address some specifics and why we think this is an important opportunity for us to pursue. As you're more than well aware, the EDC is committed to ensuring the continued economic well-being of our community. We look to promote opportunities to expand our tax base that are consistent with sound planning and the many quality-of-life attributes that have come to define our Portsmouth community. And before you tonight is going to be the proposal for a 325-space underground parking garage to be constructed at the Portwalk development. From our point of view, council leadership over the years, city staff efforts should be acknowledged for a job well done, because what other community can boast of approximately 1 million square feet of new and proposed development in the very heart of the community? Although we can take pride in the fact we continue to expand our tax base in a significant way, we have to be mindful, too, that there's a reason that many developers look favorably on pursuing projects in our Central Business District. And that has been the city's continued commitment to date to provide adequate and reasonably-priced parking. As I indicated to you in my earlier letter, the EDC feels the continued successful development of the Northern Tier is, to some degree, dependent on having an additional municipal-owned and municipal-managed parking facility. And we feel it's in the city's best interests to provide inadequate supply of reasonably-priced parking for employees, businesses, customers, visitors, and be able to continue to attract a diversity of businesses to our community, including corporate offices and professionals. The Portwalk project, in our view, goes a long way toward meeting that objective. 325 spaces, underground, out of sight, in the heart of the Central Business District, and on land made available to the city at no cost. At the end of the day, we think that's a winning opportunity. And what I'd like to do is turn it over to Vice Chair Everett Eaton, who will go into a few specifics of the proposal. Thank you very much.
As Dana said, I'm Everett Eaton, and I'm the Vice Chair of the Economic Development Commission. I just have a very few bullet points to make. First and foremost is, we need parking in the Central Business District. The High Hanover Garage has the pat-- or we've been at capacity more than double the number of times in the past year than we were the prior year. As you'll see in the graph that's coming out, that was prepared by the city staff, we met capacity 10 times in 2004, 24 times in '05, 29 times in '06, and now in '07, we're going to reach it 54 times. So almost double. So the trend's pretty clear. We are quickly growing beyond our ability to support parking in the garage. In addition to which, we're at capacity for our monthly pass holders. And as you probably know, that's really an important economic tool for the city to be able to encourage and continue to promote downtown, is the ability to provide monthly pass parking to corporate businesses. So we're at capacity there, and then we're at 72% of capacity during the daytime, the eight-to-eight important period of time for workers to get into town. We're at capacity 72% of the time. So we're very quickly outgrowing our ability or our capacity. This, as Dana, I think, mentioned, this is 325 new spots, which, as we've talked about a lot at our meetings, is coincidentally the same amount that we would net if we built the Worth Lot out today. So we're effectively, as John would say, we're moving the Worth Lot project over and underground here, right next door. It's really a great opportunity to be able to obtain that kind of parking right in the Central Business District. And it can't be overstated that we pay nothing for the land. The developer sees this as a win-win. We're going to put it underneath his parking, so we pay nothing for it and are the only-- we're only responsible for our portion of the construction costs. So in summary, this is a one-time opportunity for us to really obtain significant parking in the Central Business District. It's all underground, and there's no negative aesthetic issues with this. So the EDC wholly recommends the project. Thanks.
Your Honor, if I might just expand a little bit, just to clarify, the developer of Portwalk already has approvals and is intending to build a 325-space underground parking garage. This 325 spaces would be in addition below as a second level below ground. So all told, there would be 650 spaces at that location. 325 that would be municipally owned condominium-style, and 325 that would be owned by Portwalk. Portwalk would utilize those for their monthly parkers and for their valet parking. The city would use the 325 spaces it would own. Those would be available 24 hours a day, 365 days a year, at an hourly rate similar to the High Hanover Garage or whatever the City Council determined was the municipal rate at that time. So it's important to recognize that there are 650 spaces that would be new in that area, 325 already approved and can go forward. The additional 325 came about as a result of more studies that were done by the Portwalk developers, and the EDC asked me to work with them to see if it would be possible to proceed, and that's what the results are that we have this evening. At this time, there'll be a presentation by Josh Anderson from Portwalk, and he would like to talk a little bit about the overall project and then talk about the parking itself. And Josh, I think that's on? You just have to turn it on.
Is it working?
I think so.
Hi. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the City Council. My name is Josh Anderson. I'm with Catharus--
You might have to hold it a little closer.
Catharus Private Investments, and not used to speaking in a microphone. I thought it would be important to show you an overview of the project prior to showing you how we've been able to look at fitting the parking underground. So because we haven't presented before the City Council before, in this aerial, you can see our project is here. Maplewood comes down this way. It's bound by Deer Street, Maplewood, Hanover, and the Hill condominium. And our Phase One is the Hilton Garden Inn and condominiums. This way to Russell Street. The closer-up view of the project in rendering here, it looks like it's already here, with it would be that easy. You see the Hilton Garden Inn and Hanover Harbor Hill condominiums, with the residential building, the hotel building, office and office all over retail. The signature element of our development is the Broadwalk Portwalk Place, which carries forward the pedestrian, Vaughn Mall through very wide pedestrian-friendly sidewalks, the parking exits here on Maplewood. Very quickly going through and showing you the elevations. This is the one office building, the other office building all over retail, hotel, residential, also all over retail. This is, let's see, Deer Street-- wait, Deer Street to Hanover Street. Deer Street to Hanover Street. The Hanover Street elevation shows the entrance to the parking garage. You can see how wide the street and pedestrian ways are on the Portwalk Place. This is the Deer Street elevation, showing the hotel and the office building. This is the Maplewood elevation, showing the office building and office building over retail and the exit of the parking. And you can see the office buildings behind there. This is a rendering done by Tangram here in Portsmouth, showing the view from Hanover Street up the Portwalk Place. You see the Westin development drawn in there. This is looking down from Deer Street to Hanover Street with the office building and office building hotel here. This night shot shows is useful because it shows both the entrance to the parking from Hanover Street and the exit of the parking on Maplewood Avenue. So the project timeline, we received our site plan approval on July 31st with stipulations. There are a number of them. It's a complicated project. We are diligently working through the stipulations, and I'd say we're through half of them. The half that we aren't through yet are going as a matter of course as we approach our groundbreaking. The approved program includes 160,000 feet of office space, 70,000 feet of retail, 28 residential units, and the extended stay hotel has 128 rooms all over underground parking. We are in the end of our design development and working towards construction drawings, and we're here considering a second level of parking, and our groundbreaking is scheduled for June 1st. So we were asked to consider what considerations there were for a second level of parking. We have concluded that it's possible. We've examined the geotechnical issues of going down another level, which include the location of the bedrock, the water table, and soil, glacial till, which will support the project. These are drawings. I won't go into great detail, but it shows the bedrock contours. The bedrock is up higher here and down lower here is-- the engineers have promised me what this means, is that two levels of parking will fit underground. This shows the glacial till contours. So we can overcome the geotechnical issues. The lower level will add about 325 spaces at a cost for the incremental addition of the spaces of 12 and 1/2 million, so the entire garage of 650 spaces costs $25 million. We believe it's a win-win for the city and for Portwalk. I thought I'd spend just a quick second showing you how the garage would lay out. We've had our architects lay this out as-- let me get oriented here. Okay. The entrance of the garage is here. This is the first level below grade, so you see the first level kicking in about halfway down the ramp. So the first level comes down here. You can hunt this way and back this way, back this way. And if you want to go down below to the level below, you go down here. And so the ramps actually is very efficient. The ramps down are stacked on top of each other. The exit ramp out to Maplewood Avenue is here. The lower level, maybe a little clearer, you see the one-way down, the search loops, and one way back up to the first level. We think it's a great opportunity for Portsmouth, providing more parking downtown, well-located, easily accessible at the edge of the central core of downtown, accessible from Russell Street as well as Maplewood Avenue. No land acquisition is important. We think the three acres underground going a level deeper is a great attribute. It certainly is sustainable in nature and has green characteristics of preserving open space and moving the cars out of sight. We are on schedule with our groundbreaking June 1st. We believe this would improve the experience for everyone that parks there. It certainly is an opportunity for us. It helps us. We are creating a public place with pedestrian-friendly public sidewalks, and we'd be very happy to have more pedestrians on those sidewalks for our shops. Moving forward, we understand that the city would own its spaces as a condominium and that the city's spaces would be publicly available on a 24/7 basis, and the city would set the rates. We think that's good for Portwalk because we are, again, creating a public place. There are time constraints to our consideration here. We need to maintain our schedule in order to get to our June 1st groundbreaking, and I wanted to make sure that the City Council is aware that putting in the second level of parking will make our construction schedule have to extend between one and two months on the other end, not the June 1st end, we hope. We think this is a unique opportunity for Portsmouth. Parking is better underground, it's green, it is expensive, but it's what it costs. Again, there's no land value attributed-- Again, there's no land value attributed to this, and we have a limited window. That's my presentation.
Your Honor, I guess what I, later on in the agenda, under my items, there is a proposed two-part motion. City council can take that, can consider that now if they want by suspending the rules or waiting until later. It's up to the council what they want to do. We have people here this evening answering the question I have, but that's the options you have.
I would entertain if anybody would like to make that motion.
Your Honor, I'll make that motion to suspend the rules for the purpose of consideration of the Portwalk proposal.
Second.
Very good. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Your Honor, basically, the two motions that are proposed are on page six of the memorandum that I provided you in the packet, and while you're looking at that, it's important to recognize two things. So Josh showed a number of renderings this evening. All those renderings have the full approval of the Historic District Commission at this point and the Planning Board, so their project is ready to go. If, for whatever reason, we chose not to proceed with the 325 spaces, they would proceed with the project, as you saw here, with their 325 spaces. Under this proposal, the city would pay for its 325 spaces. Portwalk would pay for their 325 spaces. The city would operate the garage. What is also an advantage here is when Portwalk wasn't utilizing its spaces for monthly parkers or valet parking, those spaces would be made available to the public. So it is an opportunity that we have, but certainly it's one that we need to recognize that the developers have a limited timeframe as well. So this is why, this is before you this evening. This came out of a couple meetings with the Economic Development Commission, and as Mr. Levinson said, it has the full and unanimous approval of the EDC. And again, I would like to mention that this amount of spaces is the net new amount of spaces that we would have if we were to go forward to build an above-ground garage at the Worth Lawn.
Your Honor, these questions before us, I'd like to suggest that they be split into two separate motions, Your Honor.
Let's find, yeah, if you'd like to make either one of them.
Yes, Your Honor, I'd like to make one motion. Would I please? Yes. Your Honor, I move to authorize the city manager to negotiate and bring back for approval in an agreement with Parade Office LLC in accordance with a presentation which has been made to the city council this evening.
Second.
Okay, I'll take discussion or questions on this component. Seeing none?
Roll call, please.
Sure.
Very important.
Assistant Mayor Frini?
Yes.
Councilor Grasso?
Yes.
Councilor Dwyer?
Yes.
Councilor Reynold?
Yes.
Councilor Penelakis?
Yes.
Councilor Whitehouse?
Yes.
Councilor Smith?
Yes.
Councilor Hines?
Yes.
Mayor Marchand?
Yes.
Unanimous.
Okay. Now, you did allude to a second motion, to see if anybody would like to make that. Councilor Grasso?
Yes, I'll bring that up. I moved that we authorize the city manager to bring forward for the first reading on December 3rd, 2004, a bond resolution, I'm sorry, 2007, a bond resolution which authorizes the borrowing of up to 12 and 1/2 million dollars for the purpose of implementing an agreement with Parade Office LLC to create 325 spaces of municipally-owned parking.
Second.
Okay, I hear the second. Again, just to be clear, what the motion is doing is simply agreeing to bring this forward on December 3rd. So I'll take questions or comments on this. I see none.
Roll call, please.
All right.
Assistant Mayor Frini?
Yes.
Councilor Grasso?
Yes.
Councilor Dwyer?
Yes.
Councilor Reynold?
Yes.
Councilor Whitehouse?
Yes.
Councilor Smith?
Yes.
Councilor Hines?
Yes.
Mayor Marchand?
Yes.
Unanimous.
Very good. If I could have an additional motion, perhaps, a point of privilege, wanted to recognize somebody in the audience tonight. If I could have a motion to suspend the rules to do so at this time.
So moved.
Second.
Don't mean to create a lot of suspense, but sort of part of the point. I heard the second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? You can tell when somebody is very much appreciated, when, without any provocation or prodding, members of the community call and say, is there a way that we could honor somebody with a little bit of public recognition? And we happen to have one such opportunity tonight, and I'll even leave it a little bit more in suspense, but somebody who has worked with this individual is Kathy Goodwin from the Greater York Chamber of Commerce, and I believe she wanted to make a couple of brief remarks in honor of the person we're here to discuss this evening.
Thank you very much, Mayor Marchand and council members. Thank you for having me here tonight. I am Kathy Goodwin. I'm the president at the Greater York Region Chamber of Commerce and a former trustee of the Foundation for Seacoast Health. That might be a clue to you. The person we'd like to honor tonight is Dr. Susan Bunting, who is retiring after 23 years as the head of the Foundation for Seacoast Health, and we are very, very happy to have this opportunity to recognize her publicly. One of the things about the foundation, as you know, is that it rarely ever was in the forefront or in the paper, gaining the headlines around the kinds of things that have gone on to improve the quality of life here in Portsmouth and in the other eight communities that are served by the foundation. I had the good fortune of being a trustee for 11 years, but prior to that, I was founder of a before-and-after-school childcare program in the late 80s and had funding, received funding from the foundation, one of the first organizations that did so. So my history with Susan goes back quite a long way. She is a friend, a mentor, and a colleague at this point, and it has been my pleasure to be able to work and serve with her behind the scenes, and she very much has been behind the scenes, but she has been everywhere all at once. The foundation, as you know, has given millions of dollars away to nonprofits in the area. Someone had to keep those strings all attached along the way. It was a large grant-making organization in its early years with very small grants, all the way up to millions of dollars of grants. And over the years, as you know, the community campus was built with Susan again behind the scenes, making sure that that went extremely well, and now a group of nonprofits are there doing the service work that needed to be done. Children, families, seniors, thousands, literally thousands of people have benefited from the good works that the money has brought to this area, but that doesn't happen without great leadership. I'm just going to tell you a few things, and I need to refer to my notes because I have a really lousy memory at this point in my life. Susan not only has done the work at the foundation, keeping all of the trustees in line along the way and all of the organizations well-funded, but she's also the president of the Wentworth Coolidge Commission, and she's a key member of the Step It Up Seacoast Coalition. Now, I should have participated more in that organization, but there are quite a few who do. She's served on numerous task forces appointed by the governor dealing with education and kids at risk, and she was one of the founding trustees of the New Hampshire Healthy Kids Corporation, which provides low-cost health insurance to New Hampshire children. She also served on the UNH Health Management and Policy Committee, as well as the New Hampshire Department of Human Services Dental Advisory Committee. And I remember many, many, many meetings around dental health as being one of the underserved areas for families, very, very difficult situation, and Sue really was at the forefront of changing the way people looked at dental health in this state and in the state of Maine as well. She's a member of the Giving New Hampshire Task Force and the Portsmouth Rotary Club, and she's also a former board member of Associated Grantmakers. She leads organizations, she trains people in organizations, she is going to be sorely missed, and I want to just make the analogy, I think it fits so well with Susan. By the way, she told me tonight that her daughter worked on those leaves that are around your seal, so she's touched, you know, Portsmouth certainly in many ways, but this analogy is about a needle and the thread and a pair of pants. In order to stitch a pair of pants, you know, it takes some elements. You can insert the needle and the pants fall apart because there's nothing there to hold them together, and you can try to put the thread in without the needle, but that doesn't work either because you can't fit the thread in place. You need the needle and you need the thread. You need to weave the pair of pants very, very tightly, and then you find that you can't leave the needle in the work, because if you do, it hurts when you sit down. That analogy leads me to Susan. Susan is the needle. You have to let the needle go at some point and leave the good people and the work that you've done behind. I get a little emotional. I know it's very hard for Susan to leave. This has been her life's work. This is her legacy, and the families here on the seacoast that have benefited thank her, and so do I. So Susan Bunting, we're honoring her tonight. Thank you.
And I believe Susan is here. If you wanted to come on up, and we have something for you as well, a small token of our appreciation as well, mayor's word and sincere appreciation for your 22 years of service as president and CEO to the Foundation for Seacoast Health and your leadership and commitment to the organization.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. And thank you for those kind words, Kathy. That was well done, very well done. Now on to things, very important as well, but seemingly much more mundane, the acceptance of minutes from the October 15th, 2007 meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Any changes, comments on it? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? We move on now to the public comment session. We have two speakers this evening. The first is Barbara Massar from Pro Portsmouth, talking about some upcoming holiday events. We're here already.
Well, that's quite an act to follow, but I will. Barbara Massar, Executive Director of Pro Portsmouth, wanted to say happy holidays, first of all, to everyone and to invite all of you to our annual tree lighting ceremony, which is Friday, November 30th at 6:00 p.m. in Market Square, and this year we will be entertained by the Portsmouth Middle School Band, the Sandpiper Children's Chorus, and hopefully we will have decorations for the tree created by the children of Portsmouth. We invited the middle school children and the grade school children to create decorations this year, and we're doing something different this year. I like to think that Pro Portsmouth certainly gives, maybe to the hearts and minds in terms of art and music, but we wanted to do something this event to give back to the people in the city who are less fortunate than us, and what we want to do is have food drive, and that evening, we're asking friends, family, everyone who comes out to the tree lighting to bring non-perishable foods, personal and household items, and we're going to gather those up and bring them to the Seacoast Food Pantry. We've been working with them on items that they need, and those items are on a list on our website, which is proportsmith.org, and if you can't bring them to the tree lighting, you can bring them to our office, which is at 500 Market Street, and we'll collect that food until December 14th and then get it over to the pantry. And then the other bookend of the month is First Night Portsmouth, and yes, it is still on December 31st. Things start happening in town around 1:00 that afternoon with our ice sculpture and go right on up through midnight, and information on that event is located at the Pro Portsmouth website as well, and I certainly hope, Mayor Marchand, that you will join us for the tree lighting, and perhaps as Mayor Sorel did with you, you would bring our mayor-elect with you to the tree lighting this year, and of course, the rest of you are welcome as well, and we hope to see you at First Night.
I guess he's going already. This is very exciting, very proactive.
Something I said, I'm so very sorry. So thank you all, and we'll see you at the tree lighting.
Very good. Thank you very much. One thing I would want to note too, and I think it's a great idea in terms of non-perishable food items, I know that there's been tremendous deficit in that, a lot of food pantries around the state, is to take a look at the list that you alluded to. You said it's on the city's website, on the Pro Portsmouth website. Very important. I know taking a quick look at it, New Hampshire Food Bank and dealing with them in the past, it's really worth taking a quick look at it because there are specific kinds of food items that are particularly meaningful at a food bank or food pantry that are heavy in protein and other necessary nutrients. So it's, take a quick look, it's the big difference in terms of the quality and what the meaningful nature of what gets over there. And again, that's Friday, the 30th at 6:00 p.m. downtown for the tree lighting. Our second speaker, thank you very much, Barbara. Our second speaker this evening is Bert Cohen, who will be speaking on something we'll be dealing with shortly, the eco-municipality resolution. Bert, great to have you here.
Thank you, Steve. It's a pleasure to be here on behalf of the Sustainability Committee, so I would like this evening to read a letter that I didn't read last month, which sets a context for the vote which will come later. So you all have this letter in your folder, but I'd like to read it for any of those at home who might not have a chance to see that. And the letter starts out, "Dear Mayor Marchand and Manager Bilhinko, the Committee on Sustainable Practices recommends that the Portsmouth City Council adopt the attached resolution designating Portsmouth as an eco municipality." Ned Reynold will read that one later. "By taking this action, we believe that the city council will be recognizing the many steps already taken by the city and its various departments in incorporating the concepts of sustainability and balanced development into the city's daily work and reaffirming the commitment expressed in the master plan and other documents to continue to embrace this vision for the future. An eco municipality aspires to develop an ecologically, economically, and socially healthy community for the long term. While many communities in the United States and around the world have initiated and are carrying out sustainable development projects, such as green buildings, open space preservation, and recycling programs, many of these efforts have occurred on a project-by-project or issue-oriented basis. As a result, these efforts, though laudable, may be unconnected and unintegrated throughout the municipal government and larger community. An eco municipality model uses a systems approach based on the natural step framework to develop community awareness and integrated municipal involvement, adopting a common set of objectives as official municipal guiding policy. This approach often yields greater community acceptance of and participation in sustainable practice and economic development. By passing this resolution, Portsmouth will be joining other eco municipalities in the Midwest and around the world, and will be establishing our city in a leadership role by being the first eco municipality on the East Coast. Members of the Sustainability Committee are available to respond to any questions or concerns you or the city councilors may have on this issue. Thank you for your time and consideration, respectfully submitted, Committee on Sustainable Practices, Tom Rooney Chair, Bert Cohen, Gary Epler, Sandy Henneken, Sky Mar, Ned Reynold, Ann Walker." And that's the letter that Gary so nicely drafted for us, and I hope that it sets a context for the vote tonight. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I see Ann and Sky here, so appreciate you being here this evening as well. And those are our two speakers in public comment this evening. Our next section is a public hearing. It's a resolution authorizing the borrowing of up to $750,000 through the issue of bonds, notes, or the execution of lease-purchase agreements for the acquisition of one fire apparatus. And I see the chief is here.
Your Honor, I've asked the chief to come this evening to speak to the issue. While he is bringing the information forward, I guess he has some examples of what we are looking at for the aerial apparatus that I can pass along to the council members. There was a request because of untimely repairs for the existing apparatus, and there's a changeout within the CIP for this year, which I've explained in my memorandum, that takes out the rescue vehicle, puts it out to a future year, and substitutes that with an aerial apparatus. Just to say right up front, funding is available. Because we are switching these out, it will be on a lease basis. I'll let the chief speak to the issue, and then I guess we could open the public. Thank you.
Mayor Mar-
Mayor Marchand, City Council. This resolution represents a change in the apparatus replacement schedule in the city's capital improvement plan. This year's project, as John said, was to replace the heavy rescue truck, where the need to replace the large aerial device became a priority. The current large aerial devices are 109-foot straight stick known as Ladder 5. This vehicle is a 1996 HME Central States RK ladder that was purchased new in 1995. Since its purchase, the vehicle has required extensive maintenance and repairs and is now out of service. Projected costs for needed repairs to return the vehicle to service are around $70,000. This would include repairing hydraulic swivels in the turntable, further repair of outriggers, aerial and body repair and paint. This vehicle was scheduled to be replaced in the 2010 capital improvement plan. I have recommended to the Fire Commission and the city manager that this vehicle be replaced this time rather than be repaired. The repairs will be temporary and would not add to the useful life of this vehicle. This resolution purchases a new Farrar fire apparatus, 100-foot mid-mount heavy-duty aerial platform with a 2,000-gallon per minute pump and breathing air system supplied to the basket. This is an aerial platform, not a straight stick. This will enable our personnel to work at extreme heights and the safety of a basket rather than holding on to a ladder. This vehicle conforms to all current Department of Transportation and National Fire Protection Association standards, and will serve the city well for many years to come. This proposal includes the trade-in of the old ladder truck. And I will be happy to answer any questions.
At this time, I think, Your Honor, we could open it up for public hearing, and then maybe under the action if there are questions to the chief.
That'd be great. Okay, so you may be familiar, there are three times around, could speak up to three times. No strict time limit. Please keep it germane. So with that, we will open it up for a first time around, for, against, or simply about. Seeing not a whole lot of activity, we'll do it a second time, as I desperately look for my gavel. For a third and final time around, going once, going twice, and we will close that. And that is the only public hearing we have this evening. We move on now to the consideration of resolutions and ordinances. We have a few items. The first, and I will probably take the liberty of not reading all of the items, is a first reading of amendments to Chapter 7, Vehicles, Traffic, Parking Omnibus, Parking Ordinance. Perhaps, correct me if I'm wrong, in short, it's a number of, generally speaking, small changes.
Right. We have the chair of the Parking Committee here, Counselor Smith, who might want to go through these.
Perhaps if you want to make the motion, and then you could briefly describe any of the headline changes involved in this.
Certainly. I'd like to recommend that the city council pass first reading of the proposed changes to Chapter 7 of the parking ordinance and schedule the public hearing and second reading on our December 3 meeting.
Second.
Very good. Counselor?
Thank you. Basically, what the omnibus is, is we save up a lot of small changes, and we do it at one time. And so now it's getting to that time of year where we're doing that. There are, a lot of this is housekeeping, a lot of it is we find errors within the ordinance itself and are cleaning things up, unless someone has something very specific that they want to ask about. I think we can just go with the call a question.
And Your Honor, I just might want to add to Counselor Smith's description. We do have, in addition to the written word, we have maps that describe every single change, and we have those available. And if they're not online, we'll make sure they go online as well.
Very good. Take any questions or comments from any member of the council? Otherwise, Counselor did a pretty good job of describing the nature of these, and we'll move forward. Counselor?
Might just be worth mentioning a little bit on the substance, just some hourly, I guess we're, a couple of them have to do with making the parking that was around the old library. There was some controversy with that. Now that is going to be two-hour metered.
These are spaces that were at the Bridge Street Lot, not around the library, but over in the Bridge Street Lot, that were available for free prior to for the library. Now that the library is no longer there, those will become, replace the 5:30-minute spaces, and those will be two-hour spaces like the rest of the lot.
And what we can do, Your Honor, is at the next meeting, have a PowerPoint with the maps, and between either Counselor Smith and John Frederick, we can go through those, and there's explanations on them. So that's what we'll plan on doing for the next meeting. That way, we get it.
Yeah. And it's a good idea, that one example of the nature of what we're talking about. Counselor Whitehouse.
Thank you, Your Honor. In reference to that taxi stand on Pleasant Street, I think I mentioned at our last council meeting, we appreciate the Taxi Commission designating that space for the taxicabs. But we had to, through an emergency situation, put a small sign which indicated it was a tow zone, because cars were still parking there, running in there after coffee. So I like to have it indicated that this will also be a taxi stand and a tow zone area. And I asked for that at our last city council meeting. So either we make the change now or at the first reading.
You can make it at, well, this is the first reading.
Well, I'm talking about public hearing, I'm talking about. Public hearing, that's what I mean.
If I'm, unless I'm incorrect in my facts, any parking, any taxi stand is a tow zone.
Yes.
They're towed out of there if somebody is parking in there.
But this had to be identified with a sign, because they weren't paying attention.
Well, we can do that administratively. We can put a sign in.
Okay.
There is a sign there now.
Yes, there is a sign there now. We indicated.
Very good. Okay. Any other comments on this item? Seeing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I would like to suspend the rules to take up 2-1 under the city manager, the resolution.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Counselor, which item?
2-1, the public hearing adoption of the resolution.
Okay. I'd like to, I'm sorry. Can I have a second?
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed. Counselor, if you'd like to make the motion.
I would, I move to adopt the proposed resolution as present, as presented.
Oh, I just want to make sure I'm on the same page.
Are we on the borrowing resolution?
This is the borrowing.
We didn't need to suspend those. That was the next item.
Oh, I'm sorry, I misunderstood.
It was the next item?
Yeah, I'm sorry, I misunderstood. I thought you were talking about a different item. Yes, the $750,000, actually.
Is the next.
It is the next.
Okay.
Okay, so.
We don't need to go through all of them.
So if that's the motion, I'll second it.
Yeah, I'll make the motion.
Okay.
If we're not way ahead of ourselves here.
Oh, no problem. We're all very excited. Okay, so I heard the motion. Counselor Smith gave the second.
Did we finish the parking? Did we pass the first?
We did.
Yes, yes, yep.
We're asleep down here. That's okay.
No problem.
I would just jump in the gun.
Actually, Counsel Penelakas should withdraw her initial motion, and I'll withdraw my second on the other.
I withdraw.
That would clean that up.
Yeah.
Thank you. Okay. So now we are back to where we were.
Okay.
And Counselor, did you make the, I apologize. If you'd like to make the motion for where we're at at this point.
I move to adopt the proposed resolution as presented.
Very good.
Second.
We have the second. This, we'll do a roll call on this, but first, if there are any questions or comments about this item.
I just want to clarify, this is for the resolution authorizing the borrowing of the $750,000 through the issuance of bonds, notes, or the execution of lease purchase agreements for the acquisition of one fire apparatus.
Yes.
Thank you. Better be extra clear. Yes, Counselor Smith.
Just one question, if I can ask the chief, and that is the, what, the life expectancy of this truck? It seemed like the other one lasted about 15 years. How long do you think this particular piece of apparatus will go for?
Our large apparatus usually lasts around 15 years. That's our life expectancy. We get, sometimes we get more of them, sometimes less, depending on where they are and how busy they are.
So we'll put this in the CPI for 15 years out for replacement, as opposed to 20?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
One other question.
Counselor Whitehouse and Counselor Dwyer.
Chief, I see in front of me the city manager's report, and it states that the Fire Chief Leclair has reported that the Ladder 5 went out for repairs and was found to be damaged beyond reasonable repair costs and is currently out of service. So what sort of, what sort of damage was done to that ladder truck?
This vehicle was, again, purchased part of my arrival and was a combination truck that was, again, overloaded and overweight. So with the steel aerial, you have a tremendous rust issues. The swivels were this 100-foot stick, 109-foot stick has to swivel on the truck. The hydraulic swivels, the waterway swivels, all of that rotted away. The undercarriage, where the outriggers that hold it up, most like a crane, they come out. Those had to be cut off and split just to get that back, back here so we could trade it in. It's just, it's a poorly designed truck that, you know, and we babied it the last six years, getting it out of first run service. But as I said, it was, it was set to be replaced in 2010, and we're just forced to do it earlier.
Just one more question.
Sure.
Now, when this truck is purchased, this new one, it's a much larger truck with an aerial platform and a larger pump capacity. Now, will, on Station 1, will the doors, overhead doors have to be increased and the brickwork redone in order to get this truck through the opening?
Well, this vehicle will be housed at Station 2 for the time being, because that's the only station that we have that it fits in fully. Station 1, it will squeak in Friday there, isn't any snow on the ramp. But we are looking at revamping Station 1 just to help open those doors that are seriously undersized anyway. So, and hopefully, with construction of Station 2, there won't be any issues with the vehicle at all.
So that is in the capital plan for the future to remodel the entrance doorway, right?
Yes, sir. I don't want to misspeak. Yeah, we're looking at that now, so.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Dwyer.
You answered the first part of my question, which was why this only lasted the 10 years rather than the 15. I just want to understand the money trade here. We were going to be borrowing $500,000 this year. We're borrowing $750,000. What's the actual cost?
The actual cost of the vehicle is about $840,000, if, just off the top of my head. We had budgeted $1 million for 2010, projecting how much that they would cost.
Okay.
This was a demo. The dealers had it out, and they were offering it for sale. We did quite a bit of research into this and went to three or four different manufacturers. In this, the manufacturer we normally do business with, the vehicle, was about $200,000 more. So this demo with our trade is about $250,000 less than we thought we'd pay for one.
Okay, so that's the difference.
Right. And also, we, timing of purchase.
Yeah.
Let me go, Counselor Reynold, Counselor Grasso, and Assistant Mayor.
Yeah, just one more quick question. It sounded from the description that it's also some enhanced capability. You said, can you just say what the aerial basket in, and not a straight stick? It sounds like something.
Correct. Straight stick ladder truck is where you climb up the ladder truck, and it's just the flies of a ladder. When you're 100-foot off the ground with nothing around you and you're standing only on rungs, it's a, it's an odd feeling, one we live for, actually. This, actually, when we're rescuing people over the ladder, they have to come out and get on the ladder, and we have to hang on to them. This is much like a large bucket truck, where we can go up right to the window and with two or three people in the basket, bring people out. It's auto leveling. It has the Master Stream for Fighting Fires right on the bucket, along with ports where they can just stick in their breathing apparatus, because there's two large air bottles on the ladder. So no longer have to wear air packs when in the bucket. If they encounter smoke, they just plug in. And they have controls in the basket, which you wouldn't have on a ladder truck, where they can move it to window to window. It's what we, it's long overdue, but it's the safest way to have firefighters working off the ground.
Counselor Grasso.
Yes, Chief, you said the, the older truck is out of commission right now, not able to be used. When would we expect to have the new vehicle on, on duty?
I expect to see this truck in two weeks.
Wow, thank you.
It's a question for the city manager. Just want to understand, given that there's a difference in the amount that we are bonding, what is the corresponding, or is there a corresponding entry or subtraction or adjustment that we're making to the expenditures in the CIP for doing this early?
Well, the first-year payment would be $183,750. We had budgeted about $125,000, but we had money within contingency within our capital improvement plan that can cover this.
Thank you. Any other questions? Seeing none? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And this will be a roll call vote, as it involves bonding.
Mayor Farini? Assistant Mayor Farini.
Ah, whatever.
I'm tired. I'm sorry. I apologize.
Yeah, yeah.
That's true.
They called worse. Yes.
Counselor Grasso.
Yes.
Counselor Dwyer.
Yes.
Counselor Reynold.
Yes.
Counselor Penelakas.
Yes.
Counselor Whitehouse.
Yes.
Counselor Smith.
Yes.
Counselor Hines.
Yes.
Mayor Marchand.
Who, me? Yes.
Yes.
Very good. Next item.
Why I jumped the gun, Kelly.
Our next item, we heard a little bit about from Bert, who spoke earlier, the adoption of the ECO municipality designation resolution, adoption of sustainable community development policy. Perhaps Counselor Reynold, as a member of the committee, and this is truly a labor of love for you, maybe you'd like to take it off?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. If, with counsel's indulgence, I would like to read the resolution.
Nick, just for the purpose of keeping everything straight, if you want to make the motion first, so people know.
I had it in a different, I had it in a different section with my own information. Again, for the, of course, we all have it in our packets, but for the benefit of folks watching and the media coverage, this is a resolution. It says, be it resolved, ECO municipality designation resolution, adoption of sustainable community development policy. Whereas the city of Portsmouth has adopted a sustainability framework in its 10-year master plan, which includes dozens of references to sustainable practices, and whereas the adoption of the four systems conditions of the natural step described below can provide a framework to assist city employees, elected officials, and volunteer committees and boards in moving in a more sustainable direction, and whereas the willingness of the city to move in the direction of becoming an ECO municipality can serve as a model for others and encourage economic development along similar lines in our city and region, and whereas the following four guidelines were developed by the American Planning Association to help communities implement sustainable practices. And those four guidelines embody the principles in the natural step framework. Those are reduced dependence upon fossil fuels and extracted underground metals and minerals. Number two, reduce dependence on chemicals and other manufactured substances that can accumulate in nature. Number three, reduce dependence on activities that harm life-sustaining ecosystems. And number four, meet the hierarchy of present and future human needs fairly and efficiently. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the city of Portsmouth hereby endorses the principles of sustainable community development described herein and agrees to apply these principles whenever possible in its planning, policymaking, and municipal practices. It shall take effect upon passage. Steve Marchand, Mayor. So I would like to make the motion that we adopt this resolution as presented.
Second.
Okay. Pretty, thank you for reading that. Questions, comments? And Bert did a great job giving us the framework around this. Seeing none? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? And again, I want to thank the Sustainability Committee, of which about half is in the room at the moment. It's, I think, one of the things I've been most pleased with over the last couple of years. A lot of work has gone into it already, and I suspect will continue to. And it's a reflection of the importance, I think, the community as a whole places on getting this right. So thank you again. We move on to the consent agenda. If there are any items that you'd like to see removed for separate discussion, this would be the time to do so. Otherwise, I'll read all the items, and we'll accept them as a whole. Okay. The first item is the acceptance of donations to the Coalition Legal Fund. There are two. The town of Hampton Falls, $1,000, and the town of Sunapee, the amount $2,500. The second item is the acceptance of donation to the Cemetery Committee, Louise Tolman, $40. The next is the acceptance of donation to the New Library Fund, Edmund S. and Maya N. Hibbard, $250. The next item is the acceptance of donation to the Fire Department, Michael A. and Janet D. McCann, $100. The next is a letter from Bill San Laurent regarding the ruling of Superior Court Judge for garage building. And the final is a letter from Madeline Good regarding the Human Rights Torch Relay Special Event Permit Request. Do I have a motion?
Move to adopt the consent agenda as read.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed. Under presentation and consideration of written communication and petition, we have one item. I see Peter Somsich here this evening. It's a letter from Peter relating to the Labor Portsmouth Peace Treaty Parade from earlier this year, requesting that the city consider splitting the cost of the police overtime coverage for the successful event. Do I have a motion in this regard?
A motion for discussion?
Oh, yeah, simply to get it on the table.
So moved.
Second.
Here's a second. Questions, comments? Maybe one thing is to clarify the amount involved, that sort of thing.
The amount that is involved is $1,466, of which $733 would be half of that amount. As I indicated to you in my memo- As I indicated to you in my memorandum, that that could be taken from contingency if the Council so desired.
Okay. Counselor Whitehouse?
Is the motion on the floor, right?
Correct.
Yeah, okay. Question to Legal Department, please. Mr. Sullivan, I participated in the parade, and would that be a conflict of interest if I voted on this issue?
Were you paid to participate?
No.
Oh, I was.
We would have been willing to, however.
We would have been willing to.
If you were not paid to participate, it would not be a conflict for you to vote.
It has to be monetary, monetary. All right, thank you.
Good question. Counselor Grasso?
Yes, thank you. I have a concern that this is a type of an item that could increase in scope on a yearly basis. I'm wondering how much the city is willing to therefore contribute if this, this happens. I see the seven hundred and thirty-three dollars as maybe the first step, and if, and if this parade grows, as I think it will, then at what point does the city say, you know, enough is enough? And if we do it for this and something else comes up, we feel we need to do it for another activity.
Good point. The Assistant Mayor?
Thank you, Your Honor. I intend to support this motion to pay this money because the parade had more units, I think, than we ultimately all expected. And the reason that I support it in particular is because the representation there on behalf of the naval shipyard was significant, and naturally, we need to continue to raise consciousness in that regard. That said, I think my own personal feeling is that this is not a cost that should ultimately be borne by the city and that while in this instance I will vote for it, we are not the United Way. And going forward, I think we need to be careful about what sort of expenditures we accept. But again, given the significant presence of the naval shipyard, I think it was in the community's best interest to spend the money at this time.
Other questions or, Counselor Smith and then Counselor Dwyer?
Thank you. A question for the City Manager. Is the, have we heard yet from the, from the Police Commission on how they're doing on their budgeting? Because this would take away from their revenues for the...
No, we would pay for this out of contingency.
I understand, but how is this, because normally they would have received the whole thing to go into their budget. How, how are they doing on their budget for overtime?
This goes in as general fund revenue.
Okay, but my question is, is how is, how is the Police Department doing with their budgeting right now? Have we heard anything?
Nothing more than what we've had, heard recently, and just what we've had in our quarterly reports. From, from what I understand is they, they seem to be right on track with their budgeting. The one thing they did have concern is their grant-funded street sweeper project, and that, again, is something that they're waiting to hear if that's going to be refunded. But on a, if you're asking how are they doing on their operating budget, I think they're doing fine. Should you, do you, anything different?
My concern with this is the same thing that's already been mentioned. Once you start this, how do you stop it? I don't know. Do we, do we give a break to pro Portsmouth when they hold their events and... That is, again, that is the crux of a major policy issue here. And I know what the Assistant Mayor said, and probably this was the first year of this peace treaty, excuse me, it was a combination of labor and peace treaty and shipyard. To be honest with you, I think that, as the Assistant Mayor said, this, this cannot continue. What would have to happen is next year, the wherewithal would have to be demonstrated early on if the same group wanted to go forward with this. There is precedent for helping somebody in their first year, but beyond that, I would hope that we wouldn't get into subsidizing parades on a regular basis. Now, that being said, there are, we do have, we have helped out with pro Portsmouth, but they have pretty much handled the lion's share of their expenses. And I'll probably be coming back to you to talk about that because they have, there have been years where they haven't been able to fulfill their responsibilities in paying, and we need to talk about how we might write off some of those expenses. And that's something that we need to talk about as well. And has, have we helped anyone else, like the Halloween Parade, when they do this? Have they always been able to meet their, their obligations? The Halloween Parade is typically a rolling roadblock, if you will. And I believe that it's a, and I don't have all the details, but they pay for whatever they need to pay for.
And then, of course, in what is not a perfect comparison, but things like back a little over a year ago, the Little League, the parade, I think it was on Labor Day two years ago, involving the Little League team. Who covered the cost of the security related to that?
Well, the city did in that particular instance. That's a special event that the city sponsored.
Sure.
But I would have to say, going back to what the Assistant Mayor said, I would really hope that the City Council, if they choose to fund this, that it really, a clear message should be sent to the organizers that this is an opportunity only once and that they're going to have to raise the funding to handle this in the future.
And indeed, I see one of the chief organizers, Peter Somsich, here this evening, and I think irrespective of what the vote ends up being this evening, I think there's a pretty clear message being sent to all organizations. It says a first annual, there's always variables that you're not exactly sure. It was larger than expected, a variety of factors at play, but I think also trying to be very careful that the message is sent clearly as we do this, that it is not a precedent sender. I think Counselor Dwyer was next, and then Counselor Whitehouse.
I agree with this first-time rule. I guess it seems to me that maybe we need to be clearer of what city-sponsored means and when we are actually using city-sponsored, because I have to say in my own mind, it's a little ambiguous to me whether there was city sponsorship for this. It did come to us in advance. We had, we had talked about it. I don't think it was really clear whether, what degree we were sponsoring this parade. So I think we need to be clear about that in the future, when it's clearly city-sponsored and when it isn't. I think that will, that will make a difference. Because I don't think this agreement, as I remember it in our deliberations about it, that that was, we did not talk about this. That was not clear.
You're right. Okay. Counselor Whitehouse?
Yes, Your Honor, thank you. You know, I hope my fellow councilors will support this expenditure coming from contingency. You know, this parade is the first time a Labor Day parade was held in reference to the hundredth anniversary of peace treaty and the, and representing the blue collar worker. Being in the parade and going through Market Square, up Congress Street, there was a tremendous amount of interest along the sidelines, and I was surprised that the turnout was so extensive. So I think it was a surprise to the organizers that there would be an expense of these eight patrolmen that would be, have to be paid at a certain rate. And I'm saying that the next time around, I'm sure they'll have money raised by private industry. So I look at this as a one-time expenditure from a contingency, and I don't think it'll happen again, but I think we should support it this time.
Okay. Counselor Panalakis, and then I think we, message is being, being sent. Counselor?
Yes, I, I would like to see us supported. I think it was a great day. It showed that Portsmouth supported its blue collar workers, and, and it really was a lot of people out there watching it. And it's the first time for the parade, and I certainly wouldn't expect that the expenses were going to be fifteen hundred dollars. And they certainly didn't have any money to start with. They, they did their calling, did everything by themselves, so I don't think we're setting a precedent. I think we're really just fulfilling an obligation to the people.
Okay. With that, let us call the question. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? All opposed? Okay. I believe at this point, and that passes unanimously, I believe at this point we are on to a variety of items requiring action under the City Manager's name.
Thank you, Your Honor. We did complete item number one under my name. The second item is a request authorized prepayment of taxes. And I, as I've indicated to you in my memorandum, I've attached a copy of RSA 8052A, which allows upon a vote of the City Council, the opportunity for property owners to make prepayment of property taxes prior to notice of such taxes due. For various reasons, property owners request to make prepayments of their property taxes, and this would require an action of the City Council, just a simple vote this evening.
Do I have the motion?
Yep.
So...
Okay. And the second?
Second.
Very good. Questions, comments on this? Yes, Counselor?
One, one question. Mr. City Manager, years ago, there was an incentive. You was given a one percent, a one and a half percent discount on early payment of taxes. So therefore, possibly, we could reduce the notes that we pass each year in anticipation of added revenues and added taxes coming in by offering that one percent or one and a half percent.
Statute wouldn't allow us to do that now, Counselor.
So...
We're, you have to remember, we're not a home rule state.
I see, yeah.
And so there are specific statutes that outline those responsibilities of taxpayers, and, and one of the things we can't do is do the discount.
So years ago, when that one percent was given, there was no RSA reference to this?
I don't know.
Probably.
Yep.
Remember?
That's why it was stopped.
I see. Okay, yeah, all right.
Okay. Other questions or comments? Seeing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? All opposed?
Thank you, Your Honor. The next item is the report back regarding sidewalk encroachment request for Two Series Street. As you recall, at the September seventeenth City Council meeting, the City Council voted to refer to the Planning Board a request for sidewalk encroachment to allow doors to swing open upon city property at Two Series Street. I've attached a copy of the memorandum from David Holden, the Planning Director, outlining the Board's vote to recommend the City Council grant the license. In addition, for your information, the request by Lisa DiStefano was attached, and one of the things that we, the Planning Board also wanted to see happen, that the city retains the right to direct the removal of the encroachment in order to preserve the public interest.
Very good. Counselor?
I'll make a motion, Your Honor, in reference to this issue. I move to accept the Planning Board's recommendation to grant a license to Two Series Street with the following stipulations: that the city retain the right to direct the removal of the encroachment in order to preserve the public's interest.
Second.
Questions or comments on this? Counselors Dwyer and then Counselor Smith?
This was a really extensive discussion at the Planning Board, an extensive presentation in terms of alternatives to protect the public going down those fairly steep stairs. And it was, you know, agreed upon by the Planning Board, as you see here, that this was the best solution. However, a related issue came up, which is not to hold up this, but I want to raise it and then determine how best to address it, which is that there is no railing. One of the possibilities that was suggested that would have potentially helped direct traffic a little bit was that we were trying to keep people away from those swinging doors. And while we didn't feel we could require that a railing be placed down the stairs, it was certainly brought up that those are very steep stairs without any railing and that it would be, that we ought to do something about that. That isn't related directly to this request, but it came up as a safety issue associated with, it would enhance further what's being asked for here. So I just wanted to put it on the table and figure out how we should...
What I could do is administratively take a look at that and see what we'll do.
Counselor Smith and then Counselor Reynolds?
Thank you. I just want to know if, since I don't see Mr. DiStefano here, I'm assuming that she is in agreement with the stipulation? Yes, in fact, she called me to ask if she should be here this evening, and I indicated to her that typically on these, once Planning Board has gone through this, she's been out a few times on this. So I indicated to her that I didn't see a need for her to be here this evening, and I suspect she went through the whole thing with the Planning Board, so she, you know, this is exactly the way it was put before the Planning Board. Thank you.
Thanks for that. Counselor Reynolds?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a clarifying question, and I think probably an important point for the public, too. If I understand this correctly, this is, this allowance is for a set of doors that won't be used in a routine manner? These, this is so that these doors, if they had to be used in the event of an emergency, would be able to swing? Am I correct on that or not?
Yes. What I'll have is Dave Holden come down and speak to the issue.
Honorable Mayor, members of the City Council, actually, the doors will be used routinely.
Okay. Counselor?
Whose responsibility are the stairs?
They would probably be the city's responsibility. Yeah. Because it's encroaching on city property. You have to remember, if we do move forward on the Riverwalk, a lot of those things are going to, a lot of that area is going to be adjusted as well.
My reason for that question is, is to allow these swinging doors. How are we ever going to know whether people are walking through, down them stairs or not? And would we be responsible if they got hurt?
It's only nine inches.
They're, they're recessed back enough that it's a very small, and we, that's what, why our discussion was fairly extensive, and they push them back as far as they can. So it's a very small amount that they're opening to the public way.
Okay. Further questions?
And, Your Honor, just to, that's why that provision in the motion is there, to basically come, come back and have them not swing, swing out if there ends up being some issue at a future date. It doesn't permanently make it that way.
Okay. I see thought going through.
I guess it's all, should be pointed out, though, also, that it's certainly a public interest in, for the city to, I mean, we all know that outward swinging doors are a safety issue in the event of a fire, you know, some kind of emergency. So there's certainly a public interest in this as well, in allowing this. A very popular restaurant that gets pretty busy in the summer.
But didn't I hear them say that it was going to be used frequently?
Yes.
So that's not an emergency, right?
No, but I'm saying you still, even if this is, this is an entrance and exit to the restaurant, you don't want the doors swinging inward in the event of an emergency. So.
Code wouldn't allow it.
Right.
Code, right. It's against code.
Okay. Further questions or comments? Seeing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? All opposed?
Thank you, Your Honor. The next item is a, item on Lafayette School redevelopment. As you know, the City Council authorized the administration to negotiate and enter into an option to lease Lafayette School to the Portsmouth Housing Authority for redevelopment as a senior center. As I've indicated, the redevelopment of Lafayette School is consistent with the city's goal with regard to the successful reuse of vacant buildings, as well as the city's goal to create additional affordable housing. As you also know, the Lafayette School has deteriorated significantly over the last ten years. It has been vacant and is currently blighted and in need of substantial repair. Formal designation by the City Council for the Lafayette School as blighted and in need of substantial repair will enable this project to receive a higher score under the New Hampshire Housing Finance Authority's Competitive Tax Credit Program, which is a key funding source for this project. And Joe Kucher from the Housing Authority is here if you have any questions. But it is a very competitive round that he's in, and every point that, and every point we can get will be very helpful. And this would allow us to add another 10 points, Joe?
Okay.
Your Honor, move to designate the Lafayette School building as blighted and in need of substantial repair, and recognize the redevelopment of this building will meet the city's building reuse and affordable housing goals.
Second.
Hear the second. Questions, comments? Counselor? I'm sorry, Counselor Whitehouse and Counselor Smith and Counselor Dwyer?
Your Honor, I only have one concern, and that is using the word "blighted." By using this in the motion, could it be possible that in the future, that building could be demolished?
No. No, that is, the word "blighted" is required for the, for the, the grant, and that it it has to be considered blighted. It's not looked to be demolished. That would not...
It sounds like it wouldn't have values.
Rather have the word "deteriorated."
You can't use that, then we wouldn't get the 10 points.
If the word was dilapidated, and that got it done, that would be the word we'd use. This is the word you gotta use to get the qualification.
So...
I mean, if you don't want, I mean, if you don't...
I'm just asking, with the city attorneys, determination of this...
Blighted is the magic word for this purpose, but it is a very limited purpose.
I won't be here, but I hope I don't see a demolition request before the Planning Board in the future.
This word is only because we have to use a specific word. Counselor Smith?
Thank you. While I absolutely understand the intent of this and agree with it, I'm just wondering if by making this designation, does this hold us as a city financially responsible in any way?
No.
Thank you.
Thanks. Counselor Dwyer?
Well, I think my questions are along the same line. While I personally, certainly, from a layman's perspective, feel, having been, the last time I was in Lafayette School, I felt it was blighted. But I wonder what the legal meaning of this word is in this case. What, what does blighted mean in this situation? I think that's what, that's what's being asked here.
I think that blighted means that the City Council's made the determination that the appearance of the building is such that, right, it no longer meets the standards of the neighborhood surrounding it.
And I think that maybe Joe should probably come up. He has years of experience in the housing field, so he could probably answer your question better than any of us.
Thank you. Good evening. Blighted, even if you have lead-based paint in that building, which we do, and you have asbestos in that building, which we do, would constitute a blighted situation.
Okay.
Thank you, Joe.
There you go. Thank you. Look at that. You were absolutely right.
Blood and asbestos, that's good.
That's a pretty, that's blighted. Any other questions or comments? Seeing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed?
Thank you, Your Honor. The next item is report back regarding easements and license plan for the Weston Hotel Conference Center and Park Facility. I'd like to have Dave Holden come down and just go through this report back.
Honorable Mayor, Members of the City Council, this is a request that the Planning Board has received several times over the past year. It is to allow necessary easements, to allow, for example, foundation footings to extend underneath a right-of-way. The foundation would actually be underneath the sidewalk. It would also allow for certain building fixtures to extend over that property line as well, for example, windowsills, gutters, and the like. It is very similar to what was done on, exactly similar to what was done on the Hilton Garden Inn and the Eagle Ford. Their recommendation is that you should grant these, and that you should allow the city attorney and the city manager to implement those when they are properly prepared.
Thanks. I'll accept the motion in this regard?
I motion that the, let me get the right one, to accept the recommendation of the Planning Board as outlined.
Second.
Okay, questions or comments? Yes, Counselor Russell?
Yes, David, the windowsills and what you're talking about, they're, they're all above the first floor.
Correct.
Yeah.
Okay, further questions? Seeing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed?
Thank you, Your Honor. The next item is acceptance of easement regarding Kevin and Megan Bowersocks of 114 Raleigh Way. The city will be undertaking improvements to Raleigh Way in Atlantic Heights neighborhood. As part of those improvements, the city has requested a minor sidewalk easement of approximately 21 square feet from Kevin and Megan Bowersocks of 114 Raleigh Way. The existing sidewalk is already located over a portion of their premises, and this easement will effectively clear legal title. And I've given you a copy of a sketch regarding this.
Motion on this one?
I'll make a motion, Your Honor.
Please.
Yeah, thank you. Move to authorize the city manager to accept the sidewalk easement from Kevin and Megan Bowersock.
Second.
I hear a second. Questions or comments on this? Seeing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed?
Thank you, Your Honor. The next item is request to extend the license agreement for the trash compactor on Series Street. For your information, the license agreement extension between the city and owners of the Old Ferry Landing, Poco Diablo, and Stockpot Restaurants expires on November 30th, 2007. The owners of those establishments are requesting to renew their license for the trash compactor on Series Street that services their business. I've attached a copy of a letter regarding this request. Attached is a copy of an original license agreement with the amendment. Please note, and I'll quote from the proposed license, "On or about July 1st, 2008, the city manager is authorized to meet with the licensee to consider possible alternative arrangements for disposal of solid waste by the licensees, and to take those actions necessary to bring about future use of the licensed area by the city for public purposes." What we're in the process of doing now is working to try to figure out a way to deal with the needs of the restaurants in that area as it relates to solid waste disposal, as well as how we can move forward on the Riverwalk. And there've been multiple plans, and we've been discussing various options, and this would give us some time to continue to do so.
Some out.
And here the second. Questions or comments? Counselor Whitehouse?
Yes, I see in the memo from Mr. Blaylock that he talks about four restaurants. Is there four or three?
There, it's my understanding that this license would cover Old Ferry Landing, Poco, and Stockpot. I...
And Dolphin Striker.
Dolphin Striker, I guess, which we didn't have listed here. But that would be, are they a signatory? I'd have to just check that. Let's see, one, two, three. See, there, there's only three signatories, that's why.
Well, the memo says four.
The letter you mean from...
Yeah, I made a mistake.
If you want to suspend the rules, I suppose you can hear from Mr. Blaylock.
Sure, yeah.
Some move.
Clarification, I hear that. Should I get a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? All right, come up, Jack, to clarify the three versus four.
Certainly. Jack Blaylock, Old Ferry Landing. Yes, as recently as this summer, I think in starting in June, the Dolphin Striker did start to participate in using the dumpster. We've always encouraged as many restaurants and as possible to use the dumpster for convenience to limit the amount of garbage trucks coming to the street. So they started using it, and I just included them in the letter as letting the city know that we have one more user. So I know the license has always historically been between the three restaurants.
But they would be a signatory as well?
I'm not sure.
They should be. There's responsibilities that go with using the dumpster, and we really...
Right, and I would assume that they would be a signatory as well, since they are using it, so.
Okay.
Sorry for the confusion.
No problem, okay. Counselor Smith?
Thank you. Mr. Blaylock, are there any other restaurants that are using it, or are you trying to bring in any other restaurants to try to cut down the amount of trash in the area?
Another restaurant on the street was, we were hoping to start using it, is the Black Trumpet. They, as of now, they hadn't started using it. If they did, it would be a very limited usage. You're gonna understand, some of the restaurants just don't have the amount of volume that the three major restaurants that have been currently using it have. In fact, the Dolphin Striker is less of a user than the rest of us, so they just pay a smaller percentage. We've always let the people in the neighborhood, some of the residences, put their garbage in rather than waiting for their Monday afternoon pickup. So, you know, they're not, it's just something we've done as a community service, I guess, letting people use it. But nobody on a regular basis, you know, is a licensed person to use it as, as is put.
Thank you.
Okay, I think in order, given the information, probably have to amend the motion to add the fourth entity.
Yes. Would you please add the fourth restaurant, which would be the Dolphin Striker, to the motion?
Second.
Okay, second agrees. Is that a friendly amendment? Do we need to run that? Very good. Okay, further questions or comments? I'm sorry, Counselor Dwyer?
Well, I guess, you know, I understand what Mr. Blaylock is just saying about courtesy of allowing others to use it, but Bob alluded to responsibilities that go along with users, so...
Sure, let's say, for example, somebody throws five gallons of hazardous waste in that dumpster, and everybody who's signed with the city will be responsible.
Right.
Someone who had not signed the document, we wouldn't be able to assert that responsibility unless they, we could actually prove they were the ones that threw the hazardous waste.
So would we recommend that only signatories?
I do, yes.
Be allowed to?
And amendments would have to come forward as, as new people came on board.
That makes sense. Any language change in the agreed-upon amended motion that would clarify that?
Right, I think we have what we need now.
Okay, Counselor Smith?
Thank you. A question for city attorney. Is there a way we could also add in there? I think the idea of allowing some of the neighbors to put in some of their trash, if they're willing to take on the responsibility, to allow that to happen, because it is a good community service for that area. And if, you know, if they want to allow it, and they want to take on that liability, then personally, I think they should, I think it should continue. I think it's a great public service that they're doing down there.
Let me clarify, not being an attorney, because you're touching on it now.
That's why I was asking the attorney.
To the city attorney, if there are four, in this case, four signatories, and a fifth entity, use your example, the liability falls on whom?
We would have...
The four that have signed.
Yes.
So whether or not, I guess the question, this goes to Counselor Smith, if I understand right, if the four entities are comfortable or uncomfortable with that, is that relevant?
Unfortunately, all we have before us tonight is just a simple extension of a much more lengthy agreement. When I, before we bring the agreement forward to be signed by the city manager, the extension, I'll review it with this issue in mind, and some change needs to be made. We'll make it.
Okay.
All the question?
I just, I'm not sure that answered my question, but I...
It answered it for me.
All right.
In other words, we'll make certain that liability for the non-signatory user of the dumpster is covered.
Okay.
But covered by whom?
Well, that's, it's covered by any, the...
By the sign.
Yep.
I just, you know, as somebody who had a construction dumpster in her front yard for a while while we were doing our house, amazed at the number of people who drive by and throw their household trash in it.
Oh, yeah.
Very happy cats for a couple of months. However, I mean, I, this does not seem to me the type of thing that we ought to be encouraging. I understand where it's coming from as a courtesy, but it sounds like, on the other hand, rather than trying to protect it, it should be something we're trying to limit, given, given what that area is, given, you know, we don't want trash to attract trash. That's not the idea. So I, that's why I think we're a little confused. I don't think we're trying to get the city attorney to increase the potential for allowing other people to dump their trash there.
Well, what I'm hearing now is a difference of opinion between two counselors.
Exactly.
This is a policy decision for the entire city council to make. We can easily write this in a manner which allows the type of use that Mr. Blaylock has outlined, or which disallows that, whichever the council wants.
Is it related to that question? Because I want to chase that one down a little more for clarification.
Well, I just, this has been going on ever since they had the trash containers there. There's been no problems. That's up to them. They're the ones that's responsible for it. The council should not be putting there, saying certain little things that they can or cannot do, especially someone's bag of trash from upstairs. I mean, if we get into that technicality, we're really gonna have problems.
The question I have, and maybe this is for the city attorney, if it were language that said something like, "The signatories to this assume any and all liability for all trash placed in the dumpster," is that what we're talking about? I believe there's actually language similar to that in there right now.
In their present.
When I said I would review it, that's what I meant.
So if, if the Zorro of trash throws something hazardous in there, even if that person is not one of those four signatories, they will be liable for that?
Yes. That's what I believe is the case.
What would disincent, one would think, the placement of extraneous trash in the dumpster? Isn't that the idea?
I would think that would be true.
It would be in the interest of anybody who signs it to be...
Pretty diligent. Scrupulous.
Diligent.
Right.
And to make sure that they're not nailed by...
Which it seems like they have been over the years that they've had this agreement going.
Yeah, I know. The one thing I'd just say is, the reason, and I appreciate Counselor Panalos, what you said, the thing that is important to make clear, the reason why we're even talking about it is, it is on city property.
Right.
So it is very much in our interest, our responsibility, to make sure we're got, got a good understanding about what's going on. But it sounds like what the mayor-elect, an attorney, has said to the city attorney, I think that clarifies what we're talking about.
I'm not giving legal advice, but...
I know. Okay, very good. Unless there's anything else? All, well, I'm sorry, let's, just to be clear, what are we voting upon now? Because it was amended.
It was amended to allow for the Dolphin Striker to be added in as a signature. And so that motion, the amendment, should be moved. Just move the amendment, and then we can move the main motion as amended.
I think it was a...
We made the motion, but we didn't move the amendment.
It was a friendly amendment.
I think it was made as a friendly, yeah.
Okay, I'm sorry.
No problem.
Just move the main question.
Okay, so we can move the main question as amended?
Yep.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Very good.
Thank you.
Okay, the next item, Your Honor, is a P S N H request for easement, and Public Service of New Hampshire has approached the Department of Public Works regarding the need to relocate electrical switchgear that is currently in place in underground vaults in the intersection of Maplewood Avenue and Hanover Street. The recent developments of Hilton Garden Inn, the proposed development of Parade Mall site, and the future developments of the Sheridan Harbor side and Seacoast Media Group sites has prompted the upgrade of electrical system to meet future customer demands. In order to meet these energy demands, P S N H has indicated that it is necessary to install equipment at strategic locations within this area. I've attached an exhibit that outlines the approximate area of the requested easement. What, we do have representatives from Public Works and P S N H here this evening that could answer any questions you might have, but I would recommend this is referred to the Planning Board for report back.
Counselor Panalos?
I move to refer to the Planning Board for report back.
Second, Your Honor? Okay, I heard the second. Any questions or comments on this? Seeing none. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Okay, that's all I have under action items. I do have a couple informational items for city council members. The first is a report back regarding a letter from Kenneth Murphy requesting the release of any public dedication to Quikclaim D to the Eastley portion of Van Buren Avenue, and to the benefit of property located at Five Adams Avenue. As you can see from my memorandum, there's no action needed by the city council because the paper street that he was asking for action on will continue to be a paper street, but we will allow through a driveway permit, the opportunity for a driveway to be over the paper street, and retain all our easement rights as well. So we have typically done this in other paper streets. We're not giving up any property. We're letting people pass over. So that's informational item. The second?
Just one question. I just hope the storm drain is not in the middle of this, and people are parking over the storm.
We checked that, and that is not the case.
Okay.
That was the question I asked, and I was told that is not the case. The next item is the, just the first, annual recognition of service for city boards and commissions, and that will be next Wednesday evening, November 28th, at 6:30 P M. We'll start with a reception in the Portsmouth Room, and formal recognition awards at 7:00 P M., and we'll televise that. And the mayor will be the master of ceremonies that evening.
Wow.
I'll link Martin Dale aboard.
And then, finally, just to let the council know that the recount will continue tomorrow. I want to take this opportunity to thank Kelly for her well-organized efforts on behalf of the city and its election process, and also the city staff that have worked with the election group. So, thank you, Kelly, and good job here.
Thank you.
So we hope.
That's it.
That's all I have.
Yeah.
Counselor?
Yes.
I also would like to thank the city clerk and the city employees. It was a lot of hard work done today, and a lot of, whether people realize it or not, there's a lot of stress to it, because there's a lot of people hanging over your shoulders and watching everything you do. And they did an excellent job.
Thank you.
Since I'm one of them being recounted.
Very good, thank you. And I think it's on another hand. Counselor Smith?
Thank you. Just a question for the city manager. I would like to have, ask the city manager to send a letter to the, either the school board or the superintendent of schools, asking for an explanation of something that was added to their R F P. This is the first I realized of it, on page three of four, under special requirement C, that the consultant should also assess the feasibility of locating the central school office departments to the middle school facility. This is the first I'm hearing that they wanted, that the school department now wants to move their offices out of their current location and into this, into this building. I mean, already, is it's gonna be a big enough building as it is? Does this require it to be even bigger? I don't think that this has been made public in the past, and I just want to know what their line of thinking is.
I will, if nobody has any objection, I'll send the letter to the superintendent and ask him to give me a response to that inquiry. Thank you.
Certainly, that would entail, that's a good catch, I think, by counselors. That would entail perhaps a considerable amount of additional parking, which is very challenging in that area already, so I think we need a lot of details.
Okay.
Very good. That will keep that thought in mind. Thank you for bringing that up. Anything else for the city manager, before we move on to a few items I have? Seeing none. Got one appointment for your consideration to be voted upon at the next meeting. Constance Carmody for the appointment to the citizen... meeting. Constance Carmody for the appointment to the Citizens Advisory Committee. And we have five appointments upon which we vote tonight. Two of them are reappointments to the Building Code Board of Appeals. The first is Lisa DiStefano.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? The second is Chester Keefe.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The third is an appointment to the Building Code Board of Appeals, Jeffrey Landry.
So moved.
So moved, Your Honor.
The second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? The fourth is an appointment to the Board of Library Trustees, Carol Lincoln.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? The final is an appointment to the Trees and Public Greenery Committee, Carla Marvin.
So moved, Your Honor.
Second.
The second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? Thank you for those. And we have one resignation to discuss and vote upon. Tim Fortier, an alternate on the planning board.
Move to accept with regret, Your Honor.
Second.
The second?
And a letter to be sent with that.
Very good, so noted. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? That is it for me, and we move on to Councilor Smith.
Thank you. Um, first off, I'd just like to begin with, I have the report from the cruise ship committee, which was due to sunset on the December 1st. We've completed our work. I think the people that we pulled in together to make this committee happen were spectacular on their efforts. We had Donald Coker, PJ Johnson, Robin Whitaker, Gino Marconi, and myself, and the great work of Nancy Comer. We really got a lot of work done quickly, and we stayed pretty much right on task, which was the three questions that we had in front of us. First of all, which is to the feasibility of bringing cruise ships to docking into Portsmouth. The first question, we got through quickly, but we understand the, there are certain parameters that we have to work within in order to bring cruise ships into Portsmouth. It's not just a size issue, but there's also a legality issue of whether gambling facilities are on cruise ships. So, and if there are gambling facilities on cruise ships, they have to have at least 500 berths or 500 beds, which then you get into the bigger ships, and you can't bring them in. So we also spoke of, well, what if, and the question has come up a couple of times, what if the ships dropped anchor out at sea and everybody came in via tenders? Well, they would have to, the Anchorage area is actually a mile away from, oh, it's Nautical Buoy, 2RK1.
2KR.
2KR, thank you. And now you're talking an almost three-mile trip in by tender, and they just said it's just, it's not feasible. So, hopefully that answered that question, because I know it's come up to me several times. But we did find that the smaller cruise ships, we quickly found about 12 of them that we could accommodate pretty easily. But of those 12, there were only three that didn't have gambling facilities on. One of them is being reorganized, the other one is, just doesn't have an interest in coming in this area, and the final one, as I had reported earlier, they are coming in. I have put in my report from the American Canadian Caribbean Line. They will be arriving in Portsmouth. And we pull out the dates. July 9th and 10th, and August 15th, 16th. They'll be literally coming in for almost 24 hours each time. The next question is, is where is it feasible for them to dock? The docking areas that we looked at, we went, there were several areas. We have the main pier at the port, the barge pier at the port. We looked at Harbor Place, and I've spoken very briefly with the owners there, that smaller, these smaller cruise lines could dock up over there, as well as the Wentworth Marina, the Granite State Mineral Piers, and the UNH Pier out at Newcastle, which is the former U.S. Coast Guard station. Very brief conversations have happened with these, with the owners of these other locations, just to say, hey, if we ever were going to have a lot of ships, would you be interested in just talking? And we've got positive responses back on that. The last part really comes down to who's responsible for the marketing and the interfacing between cruise ships trying to come into the area. And that chose to be more of a, more of a complicated issue than we thought. So what we're going to do, and what I'm proposing, is a, you'll see the spreadsheet in my, I mean, the outline in my report, and that is, when a cruise ship committee, a cruise ship company wants to make an inquiry of the city, there are certain responsibilities that have to go through the New Hampshire provisions of ports and harbors, as well as there has to be some items that have to go through the city itself. So what's going to happen is, if an inquiry comes in, whether it comes to the city or to the port, it's first going to go over to the port for their recommendation, to make sure that they can meet the size, and working on the timing and make sure that the ship itself is able to come in physically, as well as meeting all the guidelines and rules. Once that happens, the port will provide certain resources, such as port facilities and logistic supports of getting them in. And that includes the possibility of bringing, helping assist, bringing them to another location outside of the port itself. From the city side, we'll be able to work with, and hopefully with Nancy, to make the direction for the marketers of the cruise ship companies, to be able to work with our, the Chamber of Commerce Downtown Business Association. And so, we would like to be able to get this information up on our website, because in speaking with Erica Moore, who is the operations director for the American Canadian Caribbean Line, she said that is something that, it makes it very helpful for cruise ship companies to know that either there is a committee that does this, and I'm not saying that the cruise ship committee should continue, we have done our work, but at least have a resource, so, and as an outline and a way for her questions to be answered. And I think this can be a start of working others. And then lastly, and just to briefly mention, if we were to try to go after any other ships, or larger ships, then it would be up to our state legislature to then go and change the rules of, with the gambling casinos and so forth. And that turned into a large talking point we had, and we decided that that is not, did not fall under our purview. That's not what we were charged to, to make the question of, is gambling what we want? So we have decided to, we acknowledge that that limitation is on there, but we're not going to pursue it from our committee. And with that, unless someone has any particular questions, is the report back from the cruise ship committee?
Great. Let me take any questions or comments, his response to that, and appreciate the work, great stuff, and enlightening. Councilor Whitehouse?
Yes, I personally would like to compliment Councilor Smith. I attended several of the meetings, and in a short period of time, he accomplished an awful lot, and I thank him for that. Maybe we ought to have more committees that sit down four or five times and it's automatically sunsetted. They seem to get a lot done. But at one meeting, I was concerned about a continuation of this committee, maybe through the EDC as a subcommittee. So I'd like to have Councilor Smith comment why that wasn't pursued and recommended. A subcommittee of the EDC continuing, looking at possibly future cruise ships as time goes on. And that's all I wanted to hear from him.
Absolutely. Well, we did discuss it, and we realized that in order to really make a strong committee, you have to have that tie between the Port of New Hampshire, as well as with the city. And given the amount of ships that, right now, are legally able to come in, there are only three ship companies. And so we decided, you know, Captain Marconi or the city or the Chamber of Commerce, that's something they can pretty much handle to go after the three companies. The three companies do stay in communication with the port.
Yeah.
And so they'll continue to. And like I said, we do have this one, and hopefully we can bring in another one. But if the legislation was changed to now allow more ships in, well then definitely I would see the need to have a subcommittee or some more resources to really go out and marketing towards, whether it be from the chamber or from something within the city itself. But regardless, it has to be a communication and a strong tie between the Port of New Hampshire and the city.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Councilor Dwyer.
Well, it is a lot of work, and it does seem, just as you've described, that it is work, time, and money to coordinate, to market. So I wonder if one thing that might be interesting would be when the ship does visit, or the ships visit this summer, that there'd be some way, and maybe this is something the EDC or the chamber could look at, to try to get a handle on return on investment. So to try to get a handle on, you know, what really is brought into our local businesses. And, you know, I wouldn't begin right now to kind of say how one might do that, but I think that is an EDC kind of assessment. Even an informal assessment, I think, would be, would really help then to inform work going further, because, you know, unless they're spending more than your typical average tourist, and they probably are, but you'd want to know how much that is. You know, we know pretty much what the, what some of those average figures are. Are the cruise ship tourists qualitatively different that justifies a different kind of investment? We could find that out this summer with the people who are coming.
Absolutely. As a matter of fact, and I did forget to mention, these smaller ships have a maximum of 100 people on board. So it's like bringing a couple of tour buses in.
Right.
The Director of Operations, Erica Moore, said she would be happy to come down and speak to us, or speak to the EDC, or anyone we felt she could be beneficial to help with doing extra marketing, having things set up for people and so forth, when the guests come in. We also already spoke to her that we're not looking for what happens in Portland a lot, where a cruise ship pulls in, a line of buses line up. People get put on buses, and some go to L.L. Bean, and some are going out to the Christmas tree shops. That's not happening in this instance. When the first ship comes in, we're going, she's going to have a set schedule, she's going to have information that she plans on getting from the chamber, so she is going to be down here. She wasn't available to come down at this point, because the ships are getting under the way, because, as their name suggests, they work in different areas in this time of the year. They work out of the Caribbean.
Counselor?
If the city was interested, a simple amendment could be put on to this one that allows the 500 to say that any ship could come in and with gambling on it for a period of 72 hours or something to that effect, if in the future the city was to want that.
And to keep in mind, moving forward. Other questions or comments on this? Because I know you have a few other items under your name this evening. Well, again, thank you for the work, and bring that forward to the other members of the committee as well. Like I said, I think you've, I think you had a few other items this evening as well.
So I think with that, we'd take a motion to accept the report?
Yeah, I think that's...
So moved.
Second.
The second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed?
Thank you. Moving on now to traffic and safety. This is traffic and safety minutes that were held on October 11th. If anyone has any questions or anything particular on there, I'd be happy to take them.
Both do accept.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
And lastly, I have the minutes from our parking meeting, which is October 11th. And the one thing I do just want to point out, and that is the holiday parking will be taking place again from December 10th through December 26th, and that is that the parking meters will be free for free parking downtown. However, just for people to keep in mind, the hour enforcement still is in place.
Two hours.
So it's two hours in the enforcement. So, but the meter itself is free.
Actually, let me just clarify...
See that the member of the press just left. We can just make sure that that...
Yeah, we got a press release.
Is it accurate, I just want to make sure, is it accurate to say that whatever the time limit is for the meter in question, that time limit will...
Yes.
So if it's a 15-minute, it's still 15 minutes.
15 minutes, still 15. If it's a four-hour, it's four-hour.
Right.
And if you find one that's good for a week at a time, let us know.
We ended those.
That's right. Okay. Any, I'm sorry, Counselor, any other comments, anything to note here?
Thank you.
Okay.
I've moved that the council accept the report of the parking committee and the decisions they have just made.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed?
That's all I have, thank you.
Thank you again. Other questions or comments or anything before we adjourn?
Move to adjourn.
Second.
Happy Thanksgiving, all in favor?
Hi.
Aye, all opposed?
Not that I don't like this place, but I've had enough for one day.
That's right.